It's good exercise for your cardio, easy on the joints.
Welcome everyone to the San Marcos City Council meeting for October 24th, 2023. I'd like to call the meeting to order if you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And this evening, we have Rabbi Yellen with us.
We gather here today for a city council meeting in the shadow of Hamas terrorist attack in Israel that left behind innocent victims and hostages from thirty-six different nationalities, including Americans. We pray that all hostages held in Gaza be released and returned to their families and that their captors meet justice. It is at times like this when we sense how important it is to strengthen our faith, our moral clarity, and our unity as a nation. Times like this remind us of what happens when hate takes hold of the human heart and turns it into stone. What happens when victims cry for help and there is no one listening? Thus, we turn to you, Almighty God, with our humble prayer. May the Holy One blessed be he, protect our public servants, firefighters, police officers, and all fighters of democracy and freedom around the globe, from every trouble and distress, and from every plague and illness, and may he send blessing and success in their every endeavor. We pray to you, God, for the health and well-being of our leaders and policymakers. May their decisions and message to the public always be inspired by your divine moral guidance. May our cities serve as a beacon of light for the people of all faith and walks of life. May San Marcos help achieve the goals so powerfully stated in our Pledge of Allegiance, so that America is truly one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Now let us say amen.
Amen. Thank you, Rabbi. Okay, moving on to roll call, Mr. Skulik.
Councilmember Musgrove?
Here.
Councilmember Nunez?
Present.
Councilmember Sinella?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Jenkins?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here.
Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. I'd like to pull item number six. And are there any other items that any council members would like to?
I'd like to pull item number ten.
Okay, I would make a motion for the balance of the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any notes? Okay, item number six. I personally have an issue with anytime we are approving the congestion management. I have been very consistent that on properties that have been already developed, that I do not support a congestion management fee on those properties. So I would like to make a motion to approve the Montiel property first. That, there are several APN numbers, but I'm not going to read them, but that would be the Montiel property. I'd like to make a motion to approve that into the congestion management district.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any notes? Okay, moving on. Would anyone like to make a motion on the other one, which is APN 219-1522-100 on Grand Avenue?
I'll move that we approve that into the congestion management.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No, I'm the only, no vote on that then. Okay, moving on to item number ten. Our deputy mayor.
Yes, I had asked for this to be pulled because while this is a, I understand that we need to do this. This is a mandate that has come down to us from the state. And so I'm just asking staff that, while I agree, we need to do it. I'm just asking staff that as we move forward, that we look for all options that might maybe be less costly. So that's my comments on that. If nobody else has any comments, then I'll go ahead.
So that's in the record now? Do you have a motion?
I have a motion to approve.
Okay, I'll second that. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any notes? Okay. Motion passes. Oral communications. Okay, no oral communications. Moving on to our first public hearing, which is agenda item number twelve. Item A is Pico Place, and this will be to approve the mitigated negative deck and many other things. I'm not going to go into all of it. I believe we have a staff presentation to start out with. Sorry to be so fast and not give you time to take your seats.
Perfectly okay. Thank you, Mayor Jones, council members. So for this first item, in accordance with the government code, the city may amend the general plan up to four times per calendar year. In order to accommodate these requests and needed updates, it's common and permitted under the government code to combine multiple general plan amendments into a single general plan amendment. Tonight, we have two general plan amendment requests, which will be batched under this one agenda item. Sean Del Solar and Kyreen Chua from Development Services Department will be presenting on the first item for this GPA request.
Before you now is a request for a general plan amendment, rezone, tentative subdivision map, multifamily site development plan, and mitigated negative declaration for the construction of a sixteen-unit residential condominium development. Project site is located at 236 and 244 Pico Avenue between Mission Road and San Marcos Boulevard. Location is west of the San Marcos Unified School District offices and south of the city gym and Boys and Girls Club. The project site is .63 acres and comprised of two separate legal lots with different general plan and zoning designations. The northern parcel is currently vacant, and the southern parcel contains a decommissioned fire station, which was previously operated by Cal Fire until 2010. The project would merge the two parcels and demo the existing structures to construct the sixteen-unit residential development. The project would consist of four row home-style buildings of various sizes and oriented around the project site's perimeter, running Pico Avenue. The townhomes are carriage-style units with two stories of living space over attached two-car garage. The project includes three distinct floor plans, each with two bedrooms, sixty-four square-foot balconies, and front porches on Pico Avenue and Building One. Pedestrian access is provided via private walkway encircling the site, linking all units with recreational amenities on-site and Pico Avenue as public sidewalk. A total of thirty-eight parking spaces are provided on-site, thirty-two in private garages, and six open parking spaces. Each of the sixteen residential garages will have electric vehicle-ready parking spaces, and two EV-ready spaces will be provided in the guest parking area. In total, the project will provide eighteen EV-ready parking spaces, which exceeds the Climate Action Plan and Building Code requirements. Three recreational amenities on-site will be provided, a dog run, picnic area, and tot lot playground. The proposed project will have a craftsman-inspired architectural theme, with each elevation incorporating stone wainscote on the ground floor, multiple gable ends, fixed shutters and decorative window trim, tile roofs with exposed beam ends, and sectional garage doors that will incorporate windows to ensure garage parking requirements continue to be met. Due to the project's compact footprint and prominent visibility, all outward-facing building elevations have been enhanced. Building One, seen here, will have three units, and will face the west side of the project site. Each unit in this building will have front porches, while second-story balconies will be visible from the site's east interior elevation. The front elevation of this building will face a six-foot-tall solid wall, indicated with a grayed-out area. Building Two will have four units in front the south side of the project site. The elevation on this project will again be partially obscured by a six-foot-tall solid wall represented in gray. The east elevation of Building Two, identified in red, will face Pico Avenue, and will have a front porch and balcony fronting the street. Building Three will have four units and provide primary street frontage for the project. All units in this building will have front porches and direct access to the Pico Avenue sidewalk. Lastly, Building Four will have five units in front the north side of the project site, facing the city gym and Boys and Girls Club property. The front elevation of this building would be partially obscured by a six-foot-tall wall constructed with a forty-two-inch-high block wool base, incorporating tubular steel inserts above and climbing vines maintained by the HOA to soften the transition between the project site and the Boys and Girls Club parking lot. In addition, off-site landscaping with mature trees will provide additional screening between the two properties. The east elevation of Building Four will face Pico Avenue, and the end unit in this building will again have a front porch facing the street. The project will provide eighty-five hundred square feet of landscaping with thirty trees of various species and sizes. The project includes eight privately maintained street trees along Pico Avenue, and landscaping along the perimeter of the site will buffer the project from surrounding properties. Landscape planners between the garages will enhance the internal streetscape of the private drive aisles.
Access to the site will be aligned with driveways to the east and will result in a reduction from three existing curb cuts to two. Driveways are spaced appropriately per city standards. An existing eight-inch storm drain pipe located under the western sidewalk is to be replaced with a twelve-inch pipe in the street. The storm drain system handles both mitigated onsite runoff and offsite bypass from the adjacent daycare center. Improvements along Pico Avenue are to be replaced in kind, and the pedestrian ramp at the Boys and Girls Club is to be updated to be ADA compliant. A one-foot dedication for street purposes is required to conform to the city's standard street sections in order to facilitate appropriate space for future utilities and facilities.
As briefly indicated, the project includes general plan amendment and rezone. This is required because the southern parcel of the project site is currently designated as commercial. The project proposes to change the general plan and land use designation of that southern parcel to medium-high-density residential, allowing the development of twenty to thirty dwelling units per acre, which is consistent with the zoning designation of multifamily residential, R36. The proposed change would extend the existing R36 zoning district from the northern parcel and be consistent with the density and multifamily designations of the surrounding area. The proposed project has a density of twenty-five units per acre. An economic study was prepared for the project and analyzed the potential change of direct and indirect economic outputs. There we go. Potential change of direct and indirect economic outputs of the proposed project and alternative development of the site consistent with the existing commercial designation of the southern parcel. To analyze these differences, a theoretical thirty-seven hundred square-foot commercial building on the southern parcel and smaller six-unit residential project on the northern parcel were considered. A market analysis prepared for the project identified a low demand for commercial office space and reduced demand for retail space. The analysis also identified a deep pool of entry-level home buyers and an overall higher value for a larger residential project than a split residential and commercial development on the project site. The analysis determined that a one-time economic output of four-point-one million was expected from the construction of the proposed project, while the alternative commercial residential development of the site would have a one-time output of three-point-five million. The ongoing economic output of the proposed project is expected to be approximately three-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand, whereas the expected output of the alternative commercial development of the site would be four-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand. This difference is primarily the result of anticipated loss of a limited number of commercial employment opportunities resulting from the land use change of the southern parcel. Fiscal impact study was prepared for the project and analyzed the reoccurring municipal revenues and expenditures associated with the proposed project and alternative commercial development of that southern parcel with a smaller residential project on the northern parcel. For purposes of study, revenues included property taxes, sales taxes, licenses and permits, franchise fees, and fines, among other sources of revenue. Expenditures in the study included public safety costs, public works maintenance, and other costs associated with municipal service delivery. The proposed project is expected to generate a reoccurring general fund revenue of six thousand one hundred dollars, whereas the alternative commercial residential development of the site is expected to generate reoccurring general fund revenue of approximately sixteen thousand five hundred. In accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, a mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the project. The EMD identified impacts in five environmental factor areas and included mitigation measures reducing those impacts to less than significant. For biology, potential impacts to nesting birds requires a nesting bird survey prior to the start of construction on-site during the nesting season, consistent with the conclusions of tribal consultation. Tribal monitoring of grading activities is required to mitigate potential impacts of cultural tribal resources. During the construction phase of the project, potential noise impacts to sensitive receptor sites west of the project may occur. To mitigate these impacts, construction activities will be scheduled to minimize those activities adjacent to those sensitive receptors, and noise abasement means will further reduce those noise impacts. Development of the project site may also result in cumulative impacts to city services, including police, fire, paramedic, street, open space maintenance and congestion management. Annexation to community facility districts is proposed to provide fair share property tax contributions mitigating these impacts. Lastly, given the age of the structures currently on-site, they may contain hazardous building materials requiring specialized disposal. Before any demolition permits are granted, the project must conduct testing for hazardous materials and secure approval from the San Diego County Department of Environmental Health. The EMD was circulated from July 24th to August 23rd, and two comments were received. One from Caltrans, providing an advisory letter with no project-specific comments, and a letter from the San Diego Archaeological Society, writing agreement with the cultural assessment of the project site. Notice of application and public hearing notices were sent to all property owners and tenants within a five-hundred-foot radius of the project site. No public comments were received in response to those notices. A public workshop was conducted for the project on August 31st. There were two participants, a representative from the Boys and Girls Club and another developer. During the workshop, there was interest expressed about the appearance of the project from off-site, which was addressed in the project's use of enhanced elevations for outward-facing elevations of the structures. At the September 18th Planning Commission hearing, there were no speakers on this item. The commission added a condition of approval to the project, requiring the applicant to coordinate off-site security enhancements with the commercial properties to the south. In a seven-zero vote, the commission recommended approval of the project. And consistent with that guidance, the following actions of adoption and approval are recommended for item A. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to open the public meeting. Do we have any speakers? No speakers. Okay, any discussion from the council? Yes, council member.
Just a quick question. Can you elaborate a little further on the coordination of the off-site security improvements that the Planning Commission conditioned?
Yeah, absolutely. So there's a existing passage behind the commercial structure that's there to the south. This project will construct a wall on that boundary with that property. So the commission was concerned about the potential condition of that passageway between the wall that the project constructs and the rear of the building.
Okay, so it's primarily just a wall? There's not, no additional lighting or anything like that?
Yeah, since those improvements are off-site, the applicant and that adjacent property owner can work out some effort to install lights. There was some discussion about a potential gate that could be used. So it's open to what's going to work best for them.
Great, thank you.
Can you, as a follow-up, can you, is there a map that we can see where this is going to be located?
The security measures?
Yes.
I'm not sure if this is visible. Is this visible? This is, let me see if I can.
Can you, can you?
The red line?
Yeah, can you zoom in on that? No? Oh, there it goes. Somebody's doing it. Yay. So at the bottom, Maria, that's the council member, that's where the commercial is? Can you tell by the blown-up version right there?
Yeah, that's better. I just couldn't tell if we were talking about, if it connected to any of the other residential portions or where we were talking about this particular area. So thank you for that.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, council member?
Sean, thank you very much for a good presentation, and also thank you, I'm sorry. Real quickly, there was a comment from another developer. Was it a residential, commercial, or was it just a comment?
Yeah, a developer from an adjacent university district area attended the meeting. It was a virtual meeting. The one comment that they had provided was about the elevations we had provided, the information about those enhancements and the use of landscaping, and he was satisfied.
Okay, and this is currently zoned commercial?
The southern parcel, correct.
All right, so in looking at the general plan, potential revenue loss from sixteen thousand five hundred to sixty-one hundred, that's strictly a potential if it was developed. Have we had any interest in developing that in its current zoning?
We have not.
Okay, and that's been sitting that way since, I think, the first time I went by there, the CDF were manning that fire station, and since then, nothing? Twenty-ten?
There was some discussion quite a while ago about potentially putting more of a parking lot in there for the Boys and Girls Club, but it never really panned out because it was too expensive to actually build, and then they decided they didn't really need it. So just to give you a little background.
So we're taking, we're taking a good parcel of land and a good part of our city and putting in some good housing stock, which we desperately need in that area.
Right next to the club. And then there's also, I believe, daycare there in that little center too. So it's within walking distance, which is very, which is ideal, especially because it's more of a first-time, a homebuyer kind of size and all that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, deputy mayor.
Sorry, I have a couple of questions. The six open parking spaces, I'm sorry if you specified this. How many are required for a sixteen-unit complex? Just seems like six isn't very many for sixteen, but.
Yeah, so the project provides two garage parking spaces. The six units, the six spaces are there and they're shared. The ratio is one space for every three units.
Okay. So sixteen divided by three. Okay, got it. And then, is this a right-in, right-out, or is the middle lane going to be available so you can turn left into it?
Yes, there will be full turning movements for both driveways.
Okay, and then the hazardous materials, so I remember when that structure was there and they tore it down. And I know somebody else was interested in it once, not for residential, but that there were hazardous materials underground because of tanks they had there and that sort of thing. So my questions about the hazardous materials, I see, you know, that there's going to be. know, that there's going to be mitigation, but are future residents required to receive disclosures about what was there, or no, because it's going to be 100% fully mitigated?
Yeah, Helen, I don't know if you have any experience with that type of situation?
It depends. If there is remediation that's required, if the site is fully remediated and accepted, I don't know that disclosures would be required. If there is something that remains, as we've had retail projects and residential projects that are associated with, for example, benzene flows, those are, yes, required to be disclosed to, those kinds of things are required to be disclosed to people who are moving on the site. So, it really does depend on what, if anything, is found, and whether it is fully remediated or not.
So, is that something that our staff will make the decision on, if it's fully...
There are agencies for that. It'll be County Department of Environmental Health.
Okay. And so, depending on those results, then the residents may receive disclosures...
They may.
Explaining what was there.
Right. At this point, I have no idea what might be on the site and what disclosures might be recommended or required. So, I'm sure that they will keep us apprised if there are things that we need to know.
Okay. Okay, I think those were my, oh, I had one more question. Councilmember Sannella brought this up about the security issue, and I had written this down. I'm just curious, when it says coordination for off-site security, so the off-site would not be owned by the developer, so they have to be able to get approval from the adjacent to do the off-site, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. And that's why the condition is requiring the coordination. If the two property owners are unable to find or determine there's security improvements necessary, then they'll be able to meet those requirements as conditioned currently.
Okay, as long as they can come to an agreement, and then if not, then we have a pause until it's figured out.
Yeah, and the applicants also here, if you wanted to ask them about that or any coordination efforts that have occurred.
No, I'm sure they're going to go through what they need to with the property owner. I just, the off-site caught my eye, so I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
And it's right around the corner from the Sprinter stop. Do we know how far that is? I mean, it's got to be. It's like two blocks, isn't it? I'm assuming that would be probably a good use of a transit-oriented sort of development. Okay, did you have any, council member?
I do, I have a follow-up question with respect to the hazardous materials and the mitigation. So, will anything come back to council, once we know what's contained, or what any of the federal agencies might have to say about it?
It's generally state agencies, and generally, no, the council, it doesn't generally come back to the council. The project itself is approved by, if and when it's approved by the council. That stands as a city's entitlement. The other agencies have their areas of jurisdiction that's not within the city's jurisdiction, so they generally take care of their business. If there are disclosures that are required, those may come back to us at the staff level, but I don't envision that the project would need to come back to the city council.
I'm concerned about, obviously, since we don't know what's contained or any possible, so the city's not taking any responsibility for anything that might be contained, or what might be found.
It is not owned, nor will it be owned or operated by the city. It is the property owner issue, and also potentially responsible parties, if something is found, of predecessor owners and users of the site. The city doesn't have responsibility in that regard unless it was an owner or user of the site, and I'm not aware that that was the case in this case.
Okay. And should any mitigation have to happen, then it would be then between the owner, applicant, and the agencies?
Applicable regulatory agency, that's correct.
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay. Any further discussion by the council? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close.
Or second?
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the project?
Move to approve as presented.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any notes? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to Item B, which is the Marco specific plan, and that actually has a lot of entitlements, but we have an applicant presentation this evening, I believe. Teri Matthews?
Yep.
Sorry, are we going to go first?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, let's go first. Okay.
We'll have a staff presentation. Thank you, Mary Jones.
Great, thank you. All right, I just remembered that I saw her, and then I was thinking, where did she go? So, maybe she's out in the hall, and she can make her way in, so you guys can, go ahead.
All right, thank you, Mary Jones. Councilmembers Chris Garcia and Kyreen Chuah will be providing the presentation for the Marco specific plan.
Thank you. The Marco specific plan project is a residential and commercial development, sorry, consisting of 102 multifamily condominiums and approximately 57,000 square feet of commercial space and seven live-work units for the city council's consideration. As mentioned, the applicant requests a number of entitlements, including approval of a specific plan, general plan amendment, rezone, multifamily site development plan, tentative subdivision map, conditional use permit, tentative parcel map, and site development plan. There's also a request to adopt a mitigated negative declaration, which is the environmental document prepared for the project. The project site is made up of 12 vacant parcels bordered by Grand Avenue to the north and Linda Vista Drive to the south. The site was previously developed with commercial and industrial uses, but has been vacant for over 10 years. Three existing billboards are located along the Grand Avenue frontage of the project, and the Las Poses Creek divides the site areas. Various commercial and industrial uses surround the project site, including a landscape business, auto repair business, office manufacturing building to the west and southwest, an agricultural supply business, various manufacturing uses, and an open-space conservation lot are located across Linda Vista Drive to the south. In order to develop the project site with the proposed residential and commercial uses, the requested entitlements include a general plan amendment and rezone from commercial to specific plan area. Surrounding land use and zoning designations include commercial, industrial, light industrial, and open space. The general plan amendment and rezone would amend the general plan land use map and zoning map to the proposed specific plan area designation. The Marco specific plan will serve as the primary land use policy and regulatory document for the project by providing a development planning review process and development guidelines for the project site. Under the specific plan, west, east, and open space areas are established. The west end planning area allows for multifamily residential at 20 to 30 dwelling units per acre. The east end planning area allows various commercial uses and up to seven live-work units. No development is proposed in the open space planning area, which consists of the restored Las Poses Creek segment of the project site. The specific plan includes development and design standards to achieve a high-quality development. Next, I'm going to discuss the proposed residential development within the west end planning area shown here in blue. The tentative subdivision map proposes to consolidate four existing lots into one 5.03-acre parcel and create 102 residential airspace condominium units. As part of the project, the city will transfer ownership of approximately 13,500 square feet of land to the developer in the west end residential project through a lotline adjustment. This land transfer is necessary because the transferred area includes private drainage facilities, and the city needs to secure an access easement through the private properties to maintain the creek. Furthermore, the city does not want to maintain the bridge connecting the two private properties. This area to be transferred is shown in red on the map and located adjacent to the creek area but outside the open space conservation area. The 26-foot access easement shown in green will be granted to the city for both emergency access and to maintain the creek area. Under the multifamily site development plan, the project design was reviewed for compliance with the development standards of the Marco specific plan and other regulatory provisions. The site development plan addresses the design of the 102 residential condominium units, the associated private and common open space, residential amenities, and review of the floor plans at architectural elevations. The two and three-bedroom units are spread throughout 15 three-story buildings. Seventeen of the units are single-level units located on the ground floor and are ADA adaptable. Each unit has an attached two-car garage, and 34 unenclosed guest parking spaces are provided throughout the site. One level two EV charger is proposed to be installed within each garage. The project will include recreational amenities such as totlots, play areas, a pool and spa, barbecue and picnic areas. Landscaped walkway along the creek is also provided. The project also includes a seven-foot sound wall along Grand Avenue to help mitigate sound impacts from Grand Avenue and State Route 78 at the ground floor of the residential units. Furthermore, the existing billboard along the west end Grand Avenue frontage will be removed. The project site will be accessed by a single driveway along Grand Avenue. All turning movements in and out of the project will be permitted. New landscape center medians will be constructed along the project frontage to Grand Avenue. Secondary emergency vehicle access will be provided via the existing bridge over the creek. Pedestrian access will be permitted over the bridge to link the residence on the west end with the proposed commercial development to the east. An urban trail consisting of a decomposed granite pedestrian walkway and asphalt bike path will be located along the Grand Avenue project frontage. The following slide shows some of the colored elevations of the residential buildings. Two different but similar architectural styles are proposed within the west end planning area. The elevation at the top displays the Regency style, which incorporates a white color palette, formal gables, and arched openings. The bottom elevation is designed with the Mission Revival architectural style with small accent windows, scalloped parapets, wood trim, and wood shutters. Exterior materials mainly consist of stucco walls and concrete roof tiles. The three-story buildings are approximately 41 feet in height and comply with the Marco specific plan height limit of 45 feet. 161 trees are proposed to be installed in conjunction with the project, which will bring a significant visual improvement to the site. Trees are proposed along the site's frontage to help screen the project from Grand Avenue and Highway 78. There are 23 trees proposed within the Grand Avenue right-of-way, which includes 11 trees within a new landscaped median. Additional trees are located onsite, including between the right-of-way and the buildings. Next, I'm going to discuss the proposed commercial development within the east end planning area shown here in red. The tentative parcel map proposes to consolidate eight existing lots into one 6.05-acre developable parcel and two open space creek parcels totaling approximately one acre. Similar to the west development, the city will transfer ownership of approximately 11,000 square feet of land and the existing creek bridge to the developer of the east end commercial project, and is shown in red here on the map. The transfer will relieve the city of the cost of maintaining the bridge, and in return, the city will receive a 24-foot access easement, shown in green, for both emergency access and to maintain the creek area. Under the site development plan, the project design was reviewed for compliance with the development standards of the Marco specific plan and other regulatory provisions. The site development plan addresses the design of the commercial development and associated common open space, and review of the floor plans and architectural elevations. The project consists of approximately 42,000 square feet of commercial space, which includes uses such as makerspace, retail, restaurants, bars, breweries, distilleries. Outdoor dining areas are also provided for future food service uses. There are seven live-work units that have been included, along with approximately 7,600 square feet of office space. A total of 278 parking spaces are located onsite. The parking requirement was established by a parking study and utilized urban land institute parking demand rates. In accordance with the latest adopted Title 24 Building Code and the city's climate action plan, the project is required to have and will provide at least 14 level-two EV chargers in the parking area. At least three bicycle racks will be provided onsite as well. The project site will be accessed by a single driveway from Grand Avenue and two driveways from Linda Vista Drive. All turning movements will be permitted in and out of the project. A secondary emergency vehicle and pedestrian access will be provided via the existing bridge over the creek at the northwest side of the project. An urban trail consisting of a decomposed granite pedestrian walkway and asphalt bike path will be located along both the Grand Avenue and Linda Vista Drive project frontages. A conditional use permit is proposed to allow a variety of land uses in the commercial development without additional discretionary approvals. However, some uses will still require a director's permit if proposed. Other uses not specifically listed may be permitted if the planning division director determines that the use is similar to and compatible with the approved uses. Furthermore, two existing billboards along Grand Avenue may remain on the site. However, no off-site advertising is permitted after occupancy of the project. The billboards may be used for advertising onsite business and events, or as art installations. Various onsite events are anticipated throughout the year. Small events up to 20 attendees are allowed during regular business hours, may include demonstrations, educational speakers, and wellness classes. Medium events up to 100 people are allowed twice a month on weekends between 4:00 PM and 10:00 PM, or as approved by the city with a special event permit. The medium events may include craft fairs, concerts, and outdoor movies. Large events with over 100 attendees may take place once per quarter between 10:00 AM and 10:00 PM. Large events may include farmers markets, food festivals, and holiday events. All large events require a special event permit approved by the city where additional off-site parking must be identified. Accessory entertainment will be allowed within bars and tasting rooms and on their outdoor patio spaces during business hours. A draft parking management plan for events has been prepared and will be finalized prior to occupancy. The parking management plan may be revised as needed with approval by the planning division director. The following slide shows some of the colored elevations of the commercial buildings. These are the elevations of the northerly buildings along Grand Avenue. The elevation at the top of the slide faces Grand Avenue and State Route 78. An architectural lantern feature is one of the focal points of the project and extends to 57 feet tall. A seating area and fire feature are proposed under this lantern area. A variety of exterior materials are proposed, including concrete, stucco, corrugated metal, wood panels, and fiber cement siding. Woven reeds are shown incorporated into the second-floor Seven round, single-story buildings are proposed and have approximately 1,600 to 2,000 square feet of interior space. The buildings include small associated patio areas within the circular footprint. The exterior materials are similar to the materials of the northerly buildings. At the southwest corner of the site is a single-story commercial building, a two-story live-work building, and a small standalone food service building. The live-work building contains seven units with sleeping quarters on the second floor and workspace on the ground floor. Exterior materials are mainly concrete block and stucco with wood accents. 165 trees are proposed to be installed in conjunction with the commercial project. Trees are proposed throughout the project site, including in the parking areas and along the project frontages. There are 27 trees proposed within the Grand Avenue right-of-way, which includes 13 trees within the new landscaped median. Eight trees are proposed within the Linda Vista right-of-way. In accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, a mitigated negative declaration or MND was prepared for the project. The draft MND was circulated for public review for 30 days from July 14th to August 14th of this year. During the public review period, a total of two public comments were received by the city, and a response to the comments has been provided in the final MND. Caltrans provided routine comments and did not raise any specific concerns on the project's environmental analysis. The San Diego County Archaeological Society commented that they concurred with the impact analysis and the recommended monitoring for Native American and archaeological resources. The project was noticed, and a public workshop was held in March of this year. Next, Kyreen Chuah with the city's land development engineering department will discuss the project's transportation analysis.
Thank you, Chris. The project's transportation analysis consists of both of these components. The level service analysis looks at the number of average daily trips generated from the project, and whether those trips contribute to a vehicle delay at the intersections, and how it might affect road segments' capacity within the analysis study area. The level of service analysis is conducted to determine whether the project is consistent with the city's general plan, which strives for minimum acceptable levels of service. The analysis then considers a second component, the vehicle miles traveled, VMT analysis, of how many miles a resident or employee of the project is likely to travel based on the transportation network around that location. The VMT analysis is required to determine transportation impacts for SEQA. The project's local transportation analysis concluded that the project anticipates to generate 2,241 average daily trips with 126 AM peak hour trips and 189 PM peak hour trips. The LTA analyzed seven intersections, eight road segments, and the project's four driveway entries. To contemplate the thoughts on the city's mobility element of the general plan and its goals, intersections and road segments should operate at a level of service of D or better. Additionally, there is allowed exceptions for flexible level of service for the city's urban cores, such as San Marcos Boulevard between Discovery Street and Grand Avenue, which allows for a level of service E or better. Per the city's transportation impact analysis guidelines, improvements are needed if the project's increases intersection delay by more than two seconds, or increases road segment volume-to-capacity ratio by more than .02, if the intersection or road segment already operates at an unacceptable level of service. In the near-term 2024 condition, both the road segment of San Marcos Boulevard between Villa Veracruz and Bent Avenue and the intersection of State Route 78, eastbound ramps, and Grand Avenue operate at an unacceptable level of service without the project, and the project doesn't increase the volume-capacity ratio by more than .02, nor the intersection delay by more than two seconds. Therefore, improvements are not required in the near-term 2024. Likewise, climbing to Horizon near 2050 doesn't require improvements for deficient level of service compared... of service comparing without and with project scenarios, however, with exception for the intersection of Linda Vista Drive and Grand Avenue. The project anticipates to increase the intersection delay by thirty-three seconds, therefore is required to improve operations by a fair share contribution of installing a traffic signal at this intersection and signal timing with Bent Avenue and Grand Avenue to operate at an acceptable level of service. Additionally, to anticipate cumulative project traffic impact citywide, the project will participate in the congestion management community facilities district. For assessing VMT impacts, the vehicle miles expected to be traveled by someone living or working at the project location is compared to county-wide averages for the project's office and residential components. A project's VMT per resident or per employee needs to be fifteen percent below the regional averages in order to avoid a significant impact, so it shouldn't exceed eighty-five percent of the regional average miles traveled. The project's retail component didn't require a VMT analysis as it was able to screen out per the city's Transportation Impact Analysis Guidelines as being less than five thousand square feet and considered locally-serving retail. Much of the areas traversing San Marcos exceed eighty-five percent of the regional average, so any project proposed outside the green areas of the city would need to mitigate for VMT. And the case for this project's residential component is within a green VMT efficient area and therefore did not require a VMT analysis. For the office component, the project's location was not in an efficient VMT area for employees and was required to provide a VMT analysis. The regional baseline VMT per employee is eighteen-point-nine, and the project would be required to reduce VMT by fifteen percent below the regional baseline to sixteen-point-one VMT in order to have a less-than-significant impact. The proposed VMT per employee for the project is sixteen-point-eight, which exceeds the VMT significance threshold by four-point-four percent. To reduce the average VMT per employee, the project would implement a transportation demand management program. This strategy provides a five-point-four percent VMT reduction, which reduces VMT per employee to fifteen-point-nine and therefore results in a less-than-significant impact.
Thank you, Karyn. The project MND provides several mitigation measures to address biological and cultural resources, geology and soils, hazards and hazardous materials, and transportation. The mitigation measures are routine in nature, and all environmental impacts have been determined to be less than significant after mitigation. Since the project proposes to change the land use designation from commercial to specific plan area for residential and commercial uses, fiscal and economic impact studies were prepared to evaluate the benefits and impacts of such a change. In the studies prepared by DTA, the proposed residential and commercial project was compared to a hypothetical commercial development under the current commercial zoning. Generally speaking, fiscal impact studies look at city revenues, such as taxes, licenses, and permits, and also look at expenditures such as public safety, public works maintenance, and administrative services. The fiscal impact study for the project estimates that the proposed residential and commercial project would result in a recurring fiscal surplus of approximately two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars to the city's general fund as compared to three hundred and eighty thousand if the site was developed with the hypothetical commercial project. Economic impact studies typically look at how much benefit the development would bring to the area based on economic output, such as sales and employment. The economic impact study for the project estimates the recurring economic output to the city would be fourteen million dollars compared to thirty-two million for the hypothetical commercial project. The one-time economic outputs resulting from construction of the projects are also indicated on the slide. The project site has remained vacant under the commercial zoning for ten years and is unlikely to be developed with a one-hundred percent commercial center due to trending economic conditions where there is a greater demand for residential units than the need for commercial space. The city's consultant, DTA, is available tonight if you have any specific questions regarding these studies. The Planning Commission heard the project on September eighteenth, where two members of the public spoke. One speaker was concerned with the amount of parking for the residential component and questioned the rezon from commercial to residential land use. The other speaker spoke in support of the project and stated the development would be a positive for the community. In response, the project's specific plan parking requirement for the residential component is consistent with the city's zoning ordinance parking requirements, and the development complies with these parking standards. Regarding the allowance for residential uses, the region has seen a decreased demand in new commercial development and an increase in residential demand. The specific plan provides a balance of commercial and residential development on the vacant site. The applicant requested the commission remove a condition of approval requiring at least one glass pane in the residential garage doors. The Planning Commission denied this request and noted that this has been a past practice for similar projects and assists HOAs in ensuring parking is available within garages. Additionally, a planning commissioner was concerned that the sound wall along Grand Avenue of the residential project could be defaced. A condition was added to require enhanced landscaping as a deterrent. Ultimately, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the project by a seven-to-zero vote. Staff recommends that the city council approve the requested entitlements as outlined on this slide. And this concludes staff presentation, and the project applicant does have a presentation as well tonight.
Okay. Do you mind if we ask some of our questions of you right now, or should we wait until the very end? Do we want to just ask them as we go along? I think it's a little bit easier.
Uh-uh. Questions?
Councilmember?
Thank you, Chris. And I mean, Chris, you headed me off at the pass with the potential for a commercial development with a ten-year window and no credible applications. Does that sound about right?
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Well, I'm glad that the billboards are not part of this project as a whole. So on the enhanced landscaping that we're requiring along Grand, is it possible to also make sure that we have an agreement already signed ahead of time? Because you know how we, if we, on private property, we can have an agreement signed so that anytime there is tagging, we can go in and we can remediate that immediately? I think that would be very easy to do, so we don't have to have that signed later. So if it goes up, we can just go right out and get it taken care of. Can we do that? Do you know what I'm saying, councillor?
That's generally done with infrastructure. I think with respect to private property, we would notify the private property owner or manager and have them address that immediately. If there is some exigent circumstance, they could ask for the city's cooperation, but...
It's just right on the freeway. That's the only reason that I bring that up. Yeah, it's very visible.
I'm sure that's, I mean, that's part of the reason they want this project, is because it's right next to the freeway.
Yes, exactly. Well, then, when it comes to their, sorry, I just was thinking about it as we were speaking. Maybe they could address that when they come up. Okay. And then, I think that's it for now. I think that's it for now. Okay. Yes. Deputy Mayor?
I have a few questions here. Let me see here. I just want to clarify, is this a for-sale product or for rent?
This is currently for sale.
It is? Okay. Okay, that's what I thought. Okay. And then, let's see. Oh, I do want to disclose that probably eight to ten years ago, I couldn't think past that, that I visited the Orange County development that they have. So I just wanted to disclose that when this was in the very, very early process. And then, that I did also talk to one of the consultants recently, so I want to disclose that for the record. And then, hold on here. So there was mention in here about the developer providing their fair share contribution to a future light on Grand and, what's that, Linda Vista. Do we, so it sounds like they're not required to put that in initially? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And do we have an estimated timeframe when that might need to be put in? Or do we wait and see what happens with the traffic? Because I'm guessing maybe Costco might have done a fair share when they developed. I don't know about that for sure. I'm just wondering when that light might go in.
Yeah, we would monitor the traffic in the area, and since it's a Horizon Year 2050 condition, it might be, you know, in the, in a long term when we would install that traffic signal.
So we think that light's not needed for twenty-five years? Is that what we're saying right now?
Yes.
Okay. And then, I think there was mention about fifteen bike parking spaces in here. I guess I'm just thinking in today's world that, and with more people using e-bikes and that sort of thing, that that might be low. Is that something that they might be able to increase at some point in time, or are they going to be locked into fifteen only?
They could definitely increase the number onsite, and they can probably speak to that. I'm sure they have experience with their previous projects. But yeah, as proposed currently, there's three bike racks with a capacity of five currently onsite, but they could definitely add more without issue.
Okay. And then, regarding the billboards, I believe you mentioned that there are two on the commercial site. And can you explain what that use will be in the future? Is it only for the commercial site? Or will the current users of those, displayers of those billboards still be able to display on those?
Sure. So the current billboards, the way it's conditioned, is that the off-site advertising needs to stop prior to occupancy of the commercial site. They would be used for the commercial site only to advertise either onsite businesses or the project branding in general or arts installation or special events on the site specifically, but no more off-site general commercial advertising on the billboards once occupancy occurs.
And could the developer decide to eliminate one or two of those, or do they stay on there permanently? It's up to them. That's what I'm wondering.
Yeah, they can decide to eliminate them. They are, the one on the commercial, there's actually three, and the one on the residential is being removed, and those other two can be replaced or retained as the condition currently.
Okay. Okay. Let's see. Okay, there was none of that. And then, you talked about the bridge. So that's going, the bridge is going to be maintained by the developer on the commercial side of the property. The city is not going to be maintaining that bridge.
That's correct. As part of this project, the bridge would be transferred to the ownership of the commercial east-side development.
What about the creek area that sometimes flows in there? Is that the city responsibility or the developers?
That's correct. It'll continue to be city responsibility.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so, okay, I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
I remember the one thing I was going to ask that I forgot, and that is, in the trash receptacle space, is there going to be space for organics? Because we've been talking about that a lot lately, and so I just want to make sure that there will be ample space for that. Do we know?
They'll have to comply with EDCO requirements, so my understanding is that EDCO is requiring or having organic recycling bins, as well as recycling and just normal trash bins.
And has that been rolled out yet? I can't remember to follow state law if that part has happened. Do you have for commercial? I don't know.
I think it has. I think there's a couple, my understanding is there's a couple of different tiers, so I don't know what tier they fall into, but I believe the second tier is going into effect next year, so, so yeah, if it has, and it will be.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that's on their radar. Yes, councillor?
Yeah. Real quickly, the carrying capacity of the bridges, have they been tested to ensure construction equipment and our heavy fire equipment will be supported by that bridge? I'm not sure the structural capacity, I don't know that it's, applicants worry, I'm sure it's ours at this point.
Yeah, it was a city-constructed bridge. I know that our engineering staff and fire is going to use it for access, so yes, it'll have the, it's engineered for vehicle traffic, so it should be sufficient.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? If not, we, oh, sorry. Oh, councillor?
Yeah, Mayor. I just want to confirm, there's a hundred and two condo units being contemplated. Are any of these going to be affordable, low-income?
At this time, they're proposing to pay in lieu fees and not provide any affordable onsite.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Okay. No other questions of staff. We'll be moving on to the applicant's presentation. Teri Matthews. Sorry, I was looking for you earlier. I didn't see you out in the public, so I was thinking, oh no, where'd you go?
I had to sneak out. I'm HOA president, so I had to go be on a little executive HOA board.
No worries. No worries. No worries. Glad you're still with us.
Double duty tonight. But anyway, good evening, councilmembers and Mayor Jones. My name is Teri Matthew. I'm with CCI, and I would like to indicate that our applicant developers are here, as well as some of our staff. So I don't think they'll be speaking, but just wanted to let you know that they're here because of their commitment and interest to this particular project. So I wanted to do a presentation that really speaks to the creativity of this project and how it's going to be a very unique style and unique property within San Marcos. So let me just introduce you to this mixed-use project where creativity and architecture meet. Whoops. Wrong way. Okay, how do we do this? There we go. And really, the whole key to the thing is a village of makers, and this is really being brought together. So you might have a woodworker, you might have somebody making signs, you might have a pottery person, glass blower, and a craft brewery, all coming together in this synergistic location, and they will feed off of one another and enhance one another's business. Where do those, where do those existing, or where do those businesses come from? They're probably existing already in garages or other small industrial spaces, but by moving into this project, they'll be having a synergistic effect on one another and, I think, a better environment to display their work and their projects. So that's why it was important for you to see that. And then, why, this creativity comes from, really, from two developers, and I want to introduce them to you. Some of you may have met them. It's the Lab Development, and the Lab was an early proponent of industrial reuse and recycling materials. And they took vacant industrial and warehouse structures up in Orange County and created an environment for small businesses to thrive in a new retail environment, and they became known as like the Little American Business. And this expertise provided new opportunities for them, such that they actually converted the LA Times building into a new development with open space, and you'll see a picture in a moment, as well as collaborating with UC San Diego and Riverside to create inviting culinary spaces for community gatherings. So that's part of what they're going to do here and bring it to life. So these are a couple of their developments in Orange County. The Lab Anti-Mall was one of them. They bring in the makers, they bring in food, people gather, the camp, the Make Building, and the Anaheim Packing District. And if you look at these photos, you can see, and when we get to the project, you'll see some elements that have been brought into this particular project to reflect that same concept of bringing makers and food and people gathering. And this is the LA Press building, where you can really see the open space they've created. The other development developer is Cal Pacific Homes. They have been in business since nineteen fifty-eight, and they bring an innovation of fresh ideas and the value of forward-thinking together with art and expertise in residential development in high, urban, high-density areas. And that's reflected in their projects, as you can see, twenty-two dwelling units per acre, and they have a project in Pasadena that's a hundred and twenty, a stacked over podium, which is a hundred and twenty dwelling units per acre. And then, some other residential project, and I want to point out, the top one is a stacked flat townhome. So much of what they're going to do here, they've already done elsewhere. Okay. Let's get to the project. It's more exciting. This is a specific plan project. It's a horizontal mixed-use development. The vision... The vision of the project is to be a high-quality, artist-inspired hub for retail, commercial, maker space, live-work, and multifamily townhomes in a Cal, early California and missional style, something that we haven't really seen. And I think Chris touched on that there's a hundred and two village townhomes and fifty-seven thousand square foot of commercial space. And the commercial space is going to be sort of like a backyard amenity to the residential. So they're going to play off one another and provide a great amenity. And as you can see, this is the layout, as you have already seen, with the Los Postes Creek dividing the project and the bridge providing the pedestrian access predominantly from the residential into the commercial. But it's visible, possible that it may go the other way as well, but we hope not. And then, and everything will be divided by the Los Postes Creek. Again, the CAP compliance, the CalPAC is generously providing level-two chargers that all live their garages. And so the east end or the Lab is providing EV parking onsite as well as micro-mobility parking. Yes, we probably will have to look at that if there's a need to increase it. Both projects will exceed the minimum requirement for solar at two kilowatts per square foot. And they will also exceed the number of trees. You saw a hundred and sixty-one and one sixty-five. I think there are going to be a lot of trees in this project. And, and from what it is now is just vacant land. It will, it will be a very aesthetically pleasing project. Let's turn to the west end a moment. Again, it's a hundred and two townhomes, a thousand to seventeen hundred square feet. The unit makes two-bedroom, two-bath, three-bedroom, three-bath. I mean, that's, that's really quite sizable for residential units. They are for sale. And a lot, seventeen of the ground floor units will be single-level. So really good for, for seniors. And they will all be ADA adaptable, which means, you know, it's a great environment for somebody who has a need for ADA-compliant unit. The other thing is, and I wanted to really point to this slide because it's the creativity of what they have done, not just with providing a totlet, but a creative in these little huts kind of houses and climbing equipment that they have provided to lend into the overall early Californian missional style of the project. And, and I just wanted to highlight, highlight that for you. As well as the architectural, the mission style with the scalloped parapets, as well as the arched openings. And then the regional, regency design really focuses on, again, the arched openings, but also it's the metal detail on the windows and the little small windows that have been added that sort of characterize it as that regency style. Then as we move to, oh, and also the west end, I wanted to point out that where the arrows go, there are perseos in between some of the buildings. So that allows a little bit more open space. You don't just walk out your door to a parking lot. You have a green space in between, as well as many units will be facing the creek. And so that, that's a real, you know, pleasant experience instead of just, there will be units opening up to the sound wall. But there'll be plenty of landscaping throughout the whole project. The east end will have fifty thousand, seven thousand square feet. Again, maker space where you integrate a workshop and a retail space. You can go and see how something is made. And that's a real attraction for people. How did you make that? And they could offer classes. There's a live-work. Maybe do your work on the ground floor and you live upstairs. Creative office, retail, and then restaurants that will open out onto patios as well as the creek, and then a craft brewery and distillery, all within this sort of early Californian architecture, which is really displayed well in the live-work units with the, the concrete stucco with, but more the concrete will be done with like a woven reed feel to it. And then heavy wood planking as wood trim. That lends itself into that early California style as well as missional style. And then the creativity of the retail space, the round. And, and using corrugated metal and again, wood, wood accents, as well as more of an earth and stucco to give it that really early Californian feel. And then the project is somewhat lay, is laid out like this across the site. But the real unique part of it is that there will be this very large central park-like setting that all the buildings sort of face onto. And that will lend itself very well to the community gatherings so that people can gather, enjoy conversation, enjoy a cup of coffee, a bakery item, having been to the restaurant, and also all of the maker activities or retail spaces that will be there. And again, as Chris so highlighted, there'll be a number of gatherings from small to large, with the larger ones, including a farmer's market, having, having to have the special use permit. And then again, the parking management plan will come into play to provide replacement parking for those spaces that are taken. One of the other things that they will do is they will add these little, these kiosks, which is very typical of a Lab development. And it brings the, maybe a retail person's goods out into the open space. They might not otherwise have been seen, or somebody didn't catch somebody's attention, or a food item, or just an amenity, getting your shoes shined. I never thought about that, but that will be a great option for somebody. And again, it all will be displayed in this beautiful sixty-six hundred square foot park-like environment. I think that will lend itself to a really unique project within the city of San Marcos. How does the project benefit the city or the community? First of all, as we've talked about, there are frontage improvements to calm traffic and provide ingress and egress for the project. So there, if you look at the left of the slide, there will be a landscape buffer, then a bike lane, then a pedestrian path, then another landscape buffer. And that, this will help buffer the entire front of the project on Grand Avenue from obviously the SR seventy-eight. And the same will be true on Linda Vista Avenue with a bike lane, pedestrian path, and landscape on both sides. And then I also want to highlight that there will be the center median. We, and they'll allow turn lanes for ingress and egress out of the driveways on Grand Avenue. And also, as Kyrene mentioned, we will be making, the developer will be making a fair share contribution to the traffic signal that is scheduled for twenty fifty. But you'll get the money now and hopefully it'll earn interest. The other thing that the benefit to the community is that we are providing a hundred and nine housing units to the city of San Marcos. We're providing construction work and permanent employment as well as long-term revenue stream in the form of residential taxes and retail sales. And the one thing I want to leave with you before you maybe ask questions is the whole sum of this project is here. To make art where your heart makes it, makes its home. And if you love San Marcos, I think you're going to love this project and its creativity and architectural style. So I'd like to thank you. But we do have one request, which was brought up at Planning Commission. So I'd like to bring that before the council now. And that is, there is a condition in the multifamily SDP that requires that the garages in the residential homes, which are for-sale units, have glass in the doors, glass in the garage doors. And, and CalPAC would like to eliminate that condition. And the reasons to eliminate that is, well, first of all, it's not a code requirement. It's a request from planning. Two, CalPAC, as an experienced residential for-sale developer, has a very strict set of CCNRs. They're familiar with this product type. And they allow the HOA management to go in and inspect every garage to make sure that you're not building a secondary unit in there, using it for storage or your gym, but that you're actually parking your two vehicles in that garage. So that, that, they don't feel that you need somebody to peer in from the outside. The other thing I, that I think about when you provide those glass windows, and especially in this project, which will be an open project. It's not a gated community. It's open on Grand Avenue to, you have a commercial side and you have a residential side. And there will be pedestrian traffic from the residential to the commercial, but there's also potential for the commercial to come to the residential. And, and if they had a window in, in those garage, somebody could peer in and see whether somebody was home or not. And, and by eliminating those windows, you also provided another level of security and safety for the residents in the, in the residential development. Also, the last point is that really the glass windows do not lend themselves to the arch, missional architectural style. This whole project was fashioned or inspired by the San Luis Rey Mission. And the mission, the whole concept of the mission was to provide safety protection for inhabitants with a fort, a sort of a fortified perimeter with a few accessible openings. And, and the modern glass doesn't really fit in well to that architectural style. So we would ask the council to consider it and would remove that condition, it's condition C seventeen, from the multifamily site development plan. And I'm available for questions if you have any.
So much. Okay. Any questions from the council? Yes, council member.
I have one question I'll ask at the end, but I just wanted to make a couple of comments. First off, great presentation, both staff and Teri. I, I'm relatively new to the council, but I've been on the Planning Commission before and I've, I've certainly been around town for a while. And I haven't been this excited about a project maybe ever. This is a unique project that's before us. I think it's a very special project. I thought, I think there's been a lot of thought and creativity, as you mentioned, that have gone into it. And I'm excited about the concept of sprinkling some life, literally with your hundred and nine units, into that part of town and combining it with this indoor-outdoor recreational space slash this maker's village. I just think it's going to be an incredible asset for our community. And I thank everybody that's been involved with that, from our team here at the city and then every, the development team, to come up with such a, a cool idea, which is also going to be showcased right off the seventy-eight as thousands of cars drive by every day. And that's what they're going to see and that's what they're going to think of San Marcos when they drive by. So thank you. But my one question is, and I put, I'm putting you on the spot, so if you don't have the answer, that's fine.
It's okay.
Tell me about this logo because I really like it. And is there any sort of message around this or the meaning, meaning to the logo? Is, is this Lake San Marcos with the little inlets at the bottom?
Sorry.
Okay. Am I overthinking it?
No, I think the whole, as we met with the developers and really listened to their vision for this particular project. And, and that's what you're seeing in the missional style in the early California. It was to bring in those natural elements, those earthy elements, and, and maybe even an element of some tribal, you know, some, something in that, in that vein that would, would, because a lot of the crafts that you see makers are doing come from, the glass blowing, the pottery, the leather work come from that sort of, you know, creative environment.
Okay. Well, I, I like it a lot. And then I'll just weigh in on the garage door a matter, since we're probably all going to express our opinions on it. I certainly can appreciate why we've done the glass windows in some of the other parts of town that we have, especially around the university, where we've had some unique challenges there. But I am in agreement that in this particular case, it's not near a university. It's really not near an area where I, I think we're going to have the same kind of parking challenges that those other areas have. So I'm certainly open-minded to waiving that glass requirement for this project.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, I have a sort of follow-up question, if I may, about, about the concept. And I agree with what Councilmember Sinella has said so far about, right, how exciting this project is and what it's, I think, going to do to our city. And I do like the earthiness. I like the bringing. I honestly was not expecting to see literally mission style. So when I look at these renderings where they are mini-missions, I'm having a hard time reconciling really what it means for, for our city, for our region, because I think it is such a special project and it's so prominent. So I'm trying to sort of see what the, I guess, the maker, pun intended, of the concept, how they're tying together. Because for me, seeing a mission style obviously has probably a very different concept. There's a lot that's attached to it historically. And there's a lot of pain and suffering for a lot of natives. So if the concept maker is here, maybe they can help me see how, what we're going to showcase to the world by focusing on this mission style. And it seems like it's very heavily influenced in the project. So I'd like to hear some of that.
Yeah, I think that as we went through the process, the, the original, the original, the commercial side was sort of, that concept came very early on with being a lot of the woven woods, the natural environment, you know. But then how do you translate that into stucco and concrete? And so that, but they wanted that also, that open environment. And to bring in the craftspeople, which is very much what the Lab does, is they bring in craftspeople into their environment. So it was trying to then to match the residential side. And we looked at any number of, like, you know, we don't want just this typical straight box. And so what do you do to bring in that into, to match with the more rustic side of the commercial development? And, and so we landed on like almost the missional style or, you know, San Luis Rey. The, I think there was something, if I recall, up in Santa Barbara that we looked at. So we looked at a number of styles and we felt that there was a nice blend in terms of being different and yet that same sort of earthiness to the, the total development.
I did have the opportunity to tour the Anaheim Packing House and that creation, which I think it really, I, I love the combination of the historical and sort of bringing it, but looking it in a modern interpretation. And I'm just having a hard time seeing the mission style very blatant, kind of seeing it as a, as a modern where we're at.
Yeah. I think it was also, you know, we don't typically do that style. And so it was another part of the uniqueness to bring to the project. So I hope you're not offended by it. We thought it would be an enhancement, given the two sides of the project and, and also the creativity and uniqueness of the project.
I, I think it certainly goes with, obviously, being in San Diego in Alta California, right? In the historical sense. I mean, we do have the two missions that are so close to in proximity and we are a product of that history. I just, I'm having the, once again, sort of the hard type C, the, the modern of it and how that, what it says today.
Okay. Maybe, maybe I could, maybe I could offer just maybe a different perspective, council member. So when I look at this, I don't really see mission. I, I, I wasn't sure what the name of it actually was, so Regency really did help me out. But when I look at it, I actually see some of the old Californian-esque of Restaurant Row kind of flowing in, but not necessarily a mission style. But, but some of the, I, I love the woods. I, I mean, and by the way, for everyone out there, you know, I, I visited the camp, the anti, the anti, Lab Anti-Mall. And I think the Anaheim Packing District. I thought it was longer than ten years ago, Deputy Mayor. It literally feels like it was twelve or fifteen years ago, but maybe it wasn't. It, it was such a long time ago, but it was beautiful. And, and to bring those woods in and just the naturalness of it, I guess that's not a really word, but the, the nature of it, I think is beautiful. I am, I, I agree with Councilmember Sinella. It's a very, very exciting project. And to see it finally happening, because we approved this, or, you know, we started moving forward on this such a long time ago, it's just really exciting to see this happen. And I love the part of the, and, and by the way, I was going to bring up something. Did you go to the camp, council member Nunez? Because that's one of their little anti-malls. They actually had these little pop-ups, the kiosks, as they call them. There was one that was actually an airstream and it was all cut out. And it was actually a little kiosk. I, I don't know if it's in there. I didn't, I don't know if I saw it.
I don't think it is, but I've, I've clearly seen it.
I love the uniqueness that they bring in, the, the wow factor, the very interesting, yeah, the camp is right there. They have an airstream in there that's a little kiosk. It's, it's just really fun and unique. I, I personally think that, again, you know, I love the Regency, is that what we're calling it? Yeah, the Regency Architecture.
There's two different styles, the Regency, yeah.
And that whole, I don't know if that's what's going to be the place structures, but I think it's really fun. I think it's fun, I really think it's unique, I really am excited about it. So I hope it doesn't offend you. I literally believe that it's going to be a beautiful asset for our community. And I know I've gotten over the years so many questions about it. And the evolution of it from what it started out and what it's actually going to be is really remarkable. I couldn't be more excited about it. And I don't really have an issue with the windows in the sense that it is not in a residential area. And like council member Sonella had mentioned, at the university area, it has caused a lot of issues. And I think a lot of that has to do with it. It's very difficult and very expensive to park onsite. So a lot of the kids are at the university and a lot of the kids are actually parking then on the street and wherever they can find, and so I think that really brings in the issue of that particular area. I would, I'm okay with it on a limited basis. So if we need to change something in our code or our zoning, I would be open to that. But I don't really have a problem with that. Again, think it's going to be beautiful. I'm excited, hopefully it won't take too long to actually build it. But I'm very, very excited about the project overall.
Thank you.
Council member, did you have something to add?
Sure, just a couple of things. First of all, about the windows, council member Sonella and I are both former planning commissioners. And with great respect and deference to them, I think their argument that this is consistent with past practices. We have to look at it from, I think, a larger perspective, that where does this fit in? And the mayor very succinctly put it, that we're not talking about a primarily residential area. This request is not inconsistent with the overall design plan. And I would support allowing for that condition. And not to get into a big debate up here on the dais, but our very city is the Spanish version of St. Mark's. Our county, San Diego, my familial relationship with our hometown baseball team, the Friars. I mean, it's embedded within our culture in this county. My grandfather, his parents were on the losing side with the Battle of Santa Ana and refused to go to the reservation. So they lived offsite in Arizona. So there's a lot of history, but I think we learn from history, we don't turn our back on it. We celebrate it, we learn from our lessons, that's how we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah, I think we embraced it here.
All right, any other, deputy mayor?
Thank you. Yeah, this has been a long time getting to this point, so this is pretty exciting. Couple of questions. Is the only walkway between the residential and the commercial side, the bridge? There's nothing along Grand Avenue.
Well, yes, I mean, Grad and Avenue will have a sidewalk and so you can go out the, you can go out the entrance. Let me go to the site plan. You can go out the main entrance on Grand Avenue, walk along the sidewalk and come back into the project.
Okay.
Yeah, come into the commercial side.
Okay. And then will the residents, is there any sort of parking agreement between the first 102 for sale units and the commercial? I'm just, okay, so residents will not be able to park on the commercial side at all, even if they have visitors?
Well, there are 34 guest parking places, so we hope that's enough for the guests. And there is street parking on Linda Vista. And also there will be bollards on either side of the bridge, at the bottom of the sort of the arch, to prohibit cars from going over, but they will be such that the fire department can get through. But we did that so that it wasn't a sort of a shortcut, a shortcut from Grand Avenue to Linda Vista. And we didn't want, you know, major traffic going through residential projects. So it's pedestrian predominantly, there will be some walkways along the creek as well, so.
And then the seven live-work units on the commercial side, are those rental? Or are those?
Yes, those will be rentals.
Along with all the other commercial spaces?
Correct, correct.
Okay. And then how is the, you mentioned the HOA management company is going to be able to inspect the private garages. How is that going to be disclosed to the residents when they purchase their home?
Well, basically, if you purchase a home, you get a copy of the CCNRs and rules and regs. And as a result...
Most people don't read them.
Well, you know.
Sometimes there are special disclosures that are done.
And they will, and that's probably something they will hand out. But basically, you as a resident are responsible for taking a look at your CCNRs and your rules and regs. And they will probably make a specific point of saying, you know, two cars in the garage and no storage or limited storage. So, you know, it's one of those things that they'll have to do when they sell the unit.
Right, because it seems like we're treading into private, you know, an HOA telling somebody that they can come into their property like that.
I do it all the time. I mean, I go, I get the privilege, they want to, I'd have to go inspect their garage with the resident and say, okay, yeah, I understand why you need to do this or that. And that, to make sure that they're not using it for a gym or for something else.
And regarding the windows, like we've said, we do require all similar developers to have windows. I'm certainly not one to, that I'm going to question the uniqueness of this architecture or anything like that. But I think that if we are going to agree to this, that maybe, as was mentioned, that maybe we need to just evaluate what requirements we have so that if this comes up in the future, similar situations, that we need to address that. Because I think in most cases, all people should be treated the same.
Understood.
Yeah.
Okay, I have to open the public hearing. Even though we've talked a lot, I never open the actual public hearing. But that was supposed to be done after all of our presentations, so it's okay.
I thought you opened it.
No, that was for the other one. It's okay, I opened the public hearing. I'm not sure if we have any speakers today, no? Okay, then any other further discussion from the council?
I just want to clarify for the record, I don't have an issue with eliminating the condition of the windows in the garage doors if the applicant needs to not include them. So I don't have an issue with that.
Oh, and I did notice too, I don't know if you saw this, deputy mayor, but in the parking attachment, the, where is it, parking management plan, it actually has in there a lot of different things, including they are going to have a valet, which I actually missed that somehow. I don't know how, because that's very nice when you're going to dinner and you don't have time. You've got a reservation at a certain time, you could just pop into valet and pick up your, or drop off your car. If you didn't see that, that was on page...
Five.
Or figure five, sorry, of the Parking Demand Management. Okay, any other, yes, council member?
Real quickly, Joe, Ms. Matthews mentioned that the request for the deletion of the windows was in section C-17 of the multifamily site development plan. Is that an accurate statement? That's the condition?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I do, I do have one question about the EV charging that's going to be available. Are those going to be available for the public?
Oh, could you come up, sorry, could you come up to the, I know Mrs. Peak likes that, so it's all on the record.
Yes, in the commercial, yes, all the EV will be available to the public. In the residential, there will be four chargers installed, two in standard guest parkings and two for ADA van parking.
Thank you. Oh, actually, I had one other question, I forgot to ask about that. So the EV is not wiring, it's actual full installation?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, good, thank you.
And Terry, did you say that there would be one in each of the individual garages for each unit?
There will be one charger in each garage.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other further discussion? Okay, if not, we will, I'll make, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any motions to approve?
I would move to approve and grant petitioner's request to reverse Planning Commission's decision on item C-17 of the multifamily site development plan and grant the applicant's request to delete the windows from the garage doors.
One second, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any notes? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to item number C, general plan amendment, description of action, vote to approve general plan amendments of both projects. So there's not going to be any staff presentation because we've already heard all of that. And so I'd like to open the public hearing. Any discussion and no public comments, correct? Okay, any discussion with the council? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any notes? Okay, motion passes to close and we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any notes? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Okay, so we will be moving on to item number... Oral communications, and we have none, okay. Reports, Sandag. I actually don't have my Sandag notes from the last meeting. I was only there for one hour. Council member, do you have any notes from that meeting?
Well, mayor, nothing significant. We moved forward on a couple of projects and looking, forecasting for next year's budget. Then we went into the closed session, which I cannot discuss at this meeting.
Okay, next up would be then, oh shoot, can't believe I just did that. I just lost my notes. Oh, League of California Cities, oh, here it is.
We meet later this month on a Zoom meeting, I believe, does that sound right? Council member Nunez?
Yes. Okay, North County Transit District.
We met last week in our regular board meeting. Couple items to share. As you know, we're working through redevelopment at Escondido Transit Center. And this would, so the board authorized the executive director to start a negotiation agreement with our developer, which will be Toll Brothers and Waterford Properties. And just a few things about the project. There's, obviously, we're just starting the negotiation process, but where it stands right now is there, I'm going to read this so I don't miss anything. 528 total housing units, 15% of which would be affordable. Improved rail to bus connectivity through the relocation of 15 bus stalls closer to the Sprinter rail line. A new NCTD customer service facility, a new bus operator break room facility, retail space, improved connectivity to the inland rail trail, and a new parking structure. And this would be a ground lease. So we would maintain the ownership of the property. So you can see, not only are we getting development of housing right near transit, but we are getting some needed facilities.
And revenue.
And revenue generating, yes, yes. And as of right now, the ground lease, because of all the facilities we're going to be able to get as a result of this, the ground lease right now is at $150,000 per year with a 3% increase each year.
Oh, nice.
And then the second item that we talked about was the Oceanside Transit Center pedestrian tunnel public art project. And this is the pedestrian tunnel that runs between the tracks, underground, between the tracks at Oceanside Transit Center. We'll be adding some art, updating cameras and lighting in the tunnel. And we'll be partnering with Main Street Oceanside to, they will be dealing with all of the design part of it. We did get a $144,000 grant from the state to fund the project. And the total cost, we expect it to be about $231,000, so it's just a nice thing to do.
There going to be any music?
We did not discuss music, but, no.
Underground tunnels, music is very good.
Yeah, so no, that was not discussed. So Main Street Oceanside will really be going through the process, deciding the artist and all of that.
You could have opera to kind of match the theme, that'd be kind of fun.
No music was discussed.
Okay. All right, North County Dispatch Joint Powers Authority.
Thank you, mayor. I do have some good news to report. The City Council of the City of Escondido approved for the city to join the North County Dispatch Joint Powers Authority. So it's what we were expecting, I think it's really exciting. So we will meet next in November, so we'll have a report at the December council meeting.
Great, okay, Clean Energy Alliance.
We meet this week.
Okay, City Council Business Visits, I don't think, do we have any?
Yes.
We did?
Yes.
We had a great one. Do we have any visuals on this? Okay, so deputy mayor and I visited NRK Karate. They're located on Linda Vista Drive. And the name NRK stands for, I know why you put me up first now, Nintai Ryoku Kan, pronounced... Oh, there we go, I'm like the president reading off my prompter. It translates to the House of Perseverance. The, oh, it is, okay, great. The colors are red and white and the logo represents Okinawa, which is the birthplace of karate. And the, he's a six-degree black belt, so we can call him whatever we want. But the business owner specifically trains and practices Okinawan karate. And I guess there are different variations within the islands of Japan. The three pedals represent three principles. First one, Joe, is the way of compassion, humility, humility and love. Katsu, the law of complete understanding of all forms and aspects of karate. And Foe, dedication to the seriousness of training, not only in practice, but also in mutual combat. And before I hand off, the business owners are Marcus and Denise McCannon. And just a fantastic story, a great couple, huge history. Kids going to San Marcos High School, very accomplished, very involved in the sport. Deputy Mayor?
Sure. They teach kids from three and a half, if they're potty-trained, to over 70. They're very excited to be here in San Marcos, they live in San Marcos. They're very involved, as you mentioned. It was a very, I love their feeling, very positive, just good vibes.
That's because there's no whining there. I love that.
They do have some students that have competed on the U.S. National Karate Team. Recently, two students, one received a bronze and a silver medal. They retained 75% of their students during COVID. They went to video classes and they were successful with that. So it was just a really great, it was a great visit.
It's on Linda Vista?
It's by Ripcord.
It's right next to Ripcord.
Oh, okay.
Just west of Las Pocas.
Okay, all right, nice. Yeah, it was a good visit.
All right.
Glad they're here.
Awesome, anything else? No? Okay, moving on to what we've been waiting for, the San Marcos Creek Project. Where are we?
Where are we? Well, the good news is that the creek project is on track for completion at the end of the year.
Do we have a date yet? No.
Oh, Isaac's not that silly, he's not going to give us an exact date, but we are on track. So I wanted to take a moment this evening just to, I think, remind ourselves of the amazing benefits that this project is going to bring to the area. We've been focused on some of the obstacles that we faced. And I think, just taking a moment to remind the public of the great benefits that the project will have, it's going to reduce flooding risk in the area and provide permanent access, which we struggled with every time it rained practically. It will also allow for remapping of the FEMA floodplain, which actually results in some people no longer needing to pay flood insurance, which is a significant benefit to some of the residents in that area. And it'll also reduce the burden on emergency responders. Dan's team had spent many an evening fishing people out of the flooded waterway there. We're also going to be widening the roads to improve traffic flows. So prior discovery was only two lanes, now it's going to be four lanes. Via Veracruz was two lanes with no sidewalks, making it safe to walk in that area, unsafe to walk in that area. And now via Veracruz will have four lanes with sidewalks that tie to the new trails. tie to the new trails. The trails are also going to provide connectivity to the Paseo de la Roya Park, and will connect our communities. And not to be forgotten is the extensive habitat restoration that's taking place. So you can see in the, the visual we have here, just the tremendous impact and improvement to the area that we will have once this project is done in hopefully just a few more weeks.
And both, and both bridges have pops, pop-outs on them, so you can actually go out off of the actual sidewalk and get in there a little, well, not get in there, you can't get in there. Let me, let me clarify that, but like, see it closer, honestly, than you've ever been able to see it, just because, unless, of course, you were in the water, which, you know, kind of interesting, I was looking for a photo from a couple of years ago, and I'm skimming through, and I found one of those pictures with someone stuck in the water, and I was like, gosh, it's so nice, we're never going to have to see that again, because I know our fire department, and we're always out there fishing people out, which was a lot of time and effort, and, you know, it's, it's a lot of work, or a lot of wear and tear on our, on our actual fire trucks every time we had to get someone out. Not to mention the fire, the mobile home community right there, they couldn't even get in and out sometimes, there were a few times where they were literally landlocked. So for safety reasons, it's good that that's no longer going to be an issue. Okay, with that, council commentary. Yes, Councilmember?
I just need to correct myself. I said Linda Vista. NRK is at 1355 Grand Avenue, and I just want to thank Tess, she coordinates all these visits for us.
I was kind of wondering, that's why I said Linda Vista, and I was going, hmm.
I, I think
It's okay, I must not know.
The project coming up just kind of had me stuck on Linda Vista.
I didn't have your back, I didn't catch that.
I think you left me to flounder, but that's okay. Because I did a fantastic job all by myself.
Aw. I just have one comment, just to be clear, when we say we're widening Discovery, we're really only widening it to the Pink House, and not all the way down. I just want to be certain that people understand that we're not, it's not going to be four lanes all the way down.
It's down to Discovery Elementary, right?
Just, no, just the side of it, I think.
Yes, it's not the entire stretch.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, that's it.
Okay, all right. Okay, with that, this meeting's adjourned.